Thank you God to cover us with the blood of Jesus. We thank you for every soul in the building tonight, God. We ask you, God, to receive in our minds, God, that we move to the next level. We bless you, God, for being part of this meeting tonight. We thank you for this place, this meeting, we've been held. We thank you for the people that are here tonight. We give you glory and honor. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Now, we're going to be recognized any elected officials in the building. We ask that you stand and recognize, be recognized here tonight, any elected officials. Thank you, thank you. Y'all give him a round of applause. Next, one of having on the program, we have two special kids here that are taking their time out. Other kids will be playing, they're going to be leading us in the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to call to you Christian and Chad McLeod, coming in front to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Come on, guys.
Everybody stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty which stands one nation under God, and equal rights and equal opportunity, just as for all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, y'all. Y'all give him a round of applause. He takes a lot of heat from the people and do that. There you are, there you go, everybody here. Now, we're going to keep moving on the program. Next, I'm going to be calling up to stand the introduction of Senator Williams by Mr. Jared Tillman, who was the Lattitown Administrator and Councilman.
I must talk to Mr. Haley a little bit, I just feel more comfortable. Good evening, thank you for coming to our program tonight. Senator Kent Williams was born and raised in Marion County. Graduated South Carolina State University, Florence, Dalton Tech College. He was first elected to the South Carolina Senate in 2004. He served his great state and our area for seventeen years. He currently sits on seven committees, including the Ethics, Finance, and Legislative Oversight. He's sat on numerous boards over the years. And over the seven years that I've been on council, I've had the great pleasure of working with him on such things as the water sewer improvements that you guys have seen going on in Latta. He's helped out with the street ownership, as many of you were here in Latta. He had owned our streets, and it was a great burden to everybody here. Senator Williams was instrumental in helping give that back to the state. He's signed off on a number of parks and recreation grants. He's overseen two major recoveries here in Dillon County, Hurricane Florence and Hurricane Matthew. And he's helped out on various other projects. But one of the biggest things, I think, here in Latta that we appreciate is some of this construction going on out here in front of this building. We can all thank him for the fact that it's good to come here. So, thank you very much, Senator. Come on.
Thank you, Jared. Jared, good afternoon, good to see everybody, good to be here. Let me say to all of you, we really appreciate you coming out for this town hall meeting this evening. Especially to my good friend Congressman Jim Clyburn. Just want to say thank you Congressman for accepting the invitation to come and be with us this evening to talk about some of the good things that is happening in Washington DC. And Dr. Smith has recognized our elected officials, and we appreciate you all being here. See the Chairman of the Council, Chairman Buzzard Franklin. And also, let's see the County Administrator, Clay Young. And I also want to recognize my colleague on the other side of the chamber, Representative Terry Alexander from Florence. Glad to have you here, Representative Alexander. I'm going to be very brief, I just want to highlight some of the legislation that we passed this legislative session, and also some of the budget highlights. I can honestly say, in terms of the appropriation bill, and I think Representative Alexander, he will agree with me, this is probably one of the best budgets we've had in a long time. This is a budget for the people, and we believe will make a difference in the communities, especially communities like Latta, Dillon, Marion, Marlboro counties that need, have so many needs, needs that are much greater than the more metropolitan-type areas. Our challenges are different here in these small rural communities. And we want you to have the same opportunity that other South Carolinians have across the state. And that's what we strive to work for each and every day. Of course, this legislative session pretty much was centered around COVID-19, the coronavirus. Everybody knows that. I don't know anyone who hasn't been impacted by COVID-19. In some way, form, or fashion, you have been impacted. And I want to thank the Congressman for his leadership in Washington with the federal appropriations to help us Congressman here in this state address this pandemic that we are still experiencing. And we don't want people to get comfortable and complacent now that we're kind of getting back to normalcy, if you will, if there's going to ever be a such thing as that anymore. But, you know, we, by way of federal dollars, allocated a huge amount of money to address the COVID-19 here in this state. We appropriated $208 million to DHA, MUSC, and other providers in this state to do testing and also administer the vaccine. I think the latest numbers I saw here in South Carolina, Congressman, I think we have about forty-three percent of the citizens in this state that have been fully vaccinated. And in my opinion, that is unacceptable. There's no mandate for you to be vaccinated. But I think it would be wise that if we encourage people to get vaccinated, the more people get vaccinated, the better shot we have at containing this virus. We have another variant out there, the Delta variant. You all have heard about it. I was looking at the numbers earlier today where it appears that Congressman, the numbers are on an uptick, they're on a rise. That is alarming, and it's alarming to me, it should be alarming to you. And it's only going to get worse if we don't do what we need to do. We need to encourage our family, our friends, and everybody else to consult your doctor. And once you consult your doctor, then you'll get vaccinated. It's that simple. We also restored the teacher salary increase, which is very important. Teachers is the most important person in the education system. That teacher in that classroom in front of those children. You know, it has always bothered me, and I love sports, and I know you do too. And you know, we can put a million dollars on a game-winning touchdown of football, but we can't do that for our teachers, who touch more lives, more lives than any other profession I know of. But yet, we can't do right by our teachers. And of course, we restored the increases that were suspended due to the financial uncertainties caused by COVID. We also appropriated $100 million in this appropriation bill that will go towards disadvantaged schools, including eighty-five million will be used for building improvements, facilities, and you all know what that means. Here in Dillon and a lot of these rural counties, we just don't have the tax base. We just don't have the wherewithal. We don't have the industry to provide the resources. That's where you get, the bulk of your tax base is from industry, because they pay ten and a half percent. Residents pay four percent. And second, family homes pay six percent. And so, when you don't have the industry, then it falls upon the property tax owners to pay the taxes. And so, that hurts our school system, our fire and rescue, and our police, law enforcement supporting them, because we're just going to have the revenue. And so, it's important, when we look at some of our facilities here in Dillon, here in Mayre, buildings that a hundred years old or so, Congressman, that need desperately be, to be replaced, that really needs to be replaced. Also, fifty million dollars of that money, it will go towards consolidation. You all hear that word a lot, nobody like the word consolidation, but sometimes it is what it is. Sometimes it's inevitable, you know? We're constantly changing, you know? In these rural areas, we've lost a lot of population. And so, we have to make those tough decisions. We got to do what's right and what's best for our children, first and foremost. We're expanding pre-kind, pre-kindergarten access all across the state, four K, that is. We appropriated an additional fifty million dollars to our CTC committees all across the state. I think for a Dillon County, that means an additional $560,000, a little over half a million dollars. That might not sound like a lot of money, but Congressman here in Dillon County, that's a lot of money. That money will help further the cause, as you see going on here, as you drove in, resurfacing 301, something that's been needed for a very long time. We also appropriated $500 million for post-traumatic stress disorder, treatment for first responders. You know, they have to deal with a lot, you know? And a lot of stress, a lot of stressful situation, and they put their lives on the line every day to protect us and our families and our friends. And so, we want to make sure we do a better job taking care of our first responders. We put also $3.7 million for firefighters for cancer benefit. You know, as a result of fighting these fires, going into these homes and these buildings and halting all that smoke and so forth, as a result, unfortunately, they develop sometimes cancer. So, we want to make sure we take care of them there. We appropriated $50 million to the Office of Resiliency for disaster relief. The agency is in the process of coming up with a statewide strategic resilient and risk reduction plan. The nuts and bolts of the funding is not readily available, but you all know, for the past, since 2014, I can remember, there was the ice storm. Then 2015, we had a flood. Then 2016 came Hurricane Matthews, and then we said they couched it as the thousand-year flood. We wouldn't see that again in a thousand years. And guess what happened? Two years later, 2018 came Hurricane Florence. And so, we asked the question, is this the new norm now? So, we got to do a better job planning for these disasters, dealing with our drainage system, our stormwater drainage, our rivers, our lakes, and those main thoroughways that carries our water. And so, we appropriate money for that. We appropriated money for $3.5 million under the Rural Infrastructure Authority for water and sewer, for regionalization fund. And there's nothing wrong with that. When you're small, we got to get creative. We got to pool our resources together. That's basically what it means. We're not in competition with each other, but we got to come together and we got to work as one, because numbers mean something. And so, that's how we got to look at it. And so, we are encouraging regionalization in terms of water and sewer. Back in the day, I can remember here in Latta, when you all had manufacturing, and they used a lot of water, and they used a lot of sewer, Congressman. And that was a revenue-generating mechanism for this town. But guess what happened? You know, I hate to say it, I believe it was in 1995, and we had the NAFTA trade agreement. We started losing manufacturing, Congressman, and we lost them in these small communities that was basically manufacturing and agriculture. Things have changed. Now, we see manufacturing coming back, but it's coming back in a different way, a different form, cleaner, more technical in nature, much higher-paying jobs that require some skills. But we'll talk about that another day. Broadband expansion, can't say enough, Congressman, about broadband. Broadband is part of the infrastructure. And you know, we always knew here in this state that we needed to expand broadband. But what really brought it to the forefront is when COVID-19 hit, the pandemic. It really realized, made us realize where we were in terms of broadband. And when they started having to go to virtual learning, distant learning, and those kinds of things, Zoom and those kinds of things, just didn't have the capability to do so. And you know, sad to say, we've lost a lot of our children, Congressman, because of that, not having access to broadband. But thanks to the Congressman in Washington, that is changing. We're beginning to expand broadband all across this state, especially in fourteen rural counties, what we kind of refer to as disadvantaged, kind of tier-four, top counties, counties of priority. We also appropriated $30 million for broadband by way of grants through ORAS, which is the Office of Regulatory Services, and the list goes on. And there again, like I said, I think we had a very productive year in terms of the budget and some other things, education, I think we made progress. And hopefully, we will continue to do so. And I will conclude by saying this, it's real simple to fix the problem. It's not rocket science. And I say this all the time to my colleagues from more affluent areas, it's all about sharing the wealth. So, the Bible says, "To move as much as given, as much is required." Got to share the wealth. We're all South Carolinians. And look at, you have to have on one side and have not on the other side. And so, that's what we fight for every day. But I'm going to pause there and say that I appreciate the opportunity to serve you in the South Carolina Senate. I will take that lightly. I hope that I have represented you in the way that you would want me to. And we will continue to fight each and every day for our citizens. We don't always get it right, but I can tell you one thing, we don't mind taking a stab at it. And you know, our door is always open, and the telephone is always working, because we pay the bill. So, on that note, I want to take this opportunity to introduce my friend, someone who really does not need no introduction. Everybody knows this man, Congressman Jim Clyburn. Majority Whip of the United States Congress. Do you all know what that means, the majority whip? It means power. It means influence. It means respect. This is a man of integrity. And I'm not saying this because he's sitting there. A man of integrity. I would say without any hesitation that Jim Clyburn is among the most powerful in the history of the US Congress in the last century. And let me tell you what is equally important, that is his good name, his character, his integrity, and his faithfulness to his family. He has his daughter here with him this evening, Jennifer. Never, never have been involved in any corruption or any scamming, and has served in the US Congress since 1992. Thank you. Thank you for serving South Carolina with dignity, integrity. And thank you for the respect you bring to South Carolina. He's not just a son of South Carolina, but he is a citizen of the world. This man is known worldwide. That's the kind of leadership he has earned in his years in Congress. And we are very grateful and appreciative that we extended the invitation to him to come and be with us today and share with us what is happening in Washington and the good things that can change lives in our communities. Please join me in welcoming Congressman Jim Clyburn.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very, very much. And thank you, Senator. And I might intermittently call you Kent. We have been friends for a long, long time, and I really, really appreciate your friendship, the friendship of your entire family. For twenty, of the twenty-nine years that I've been in the Congress, I represented Marion County, represented his family. And when I first got elected, he used to invite me over there and have all kinds of what we call in Low Country, all kind of eatings. That's one of the things I miss about not having Marion in my district, but I might just come over there. Thank you very much. Let me thank the people of Dillon County for being here this evening. When the Senator extended the invitation, I was planning to have five town hall meetings. Four of which, three of which would be along the I-95 court. And two, one in North Charleston, which we had a couple nights ago. And last night, we were in Richland County, that's Columbia. But we got the invitation to come up here to Latta. And if you, a lot of you may remember, but when the congressional district, the sixth congressional district was first formed, Latta was in it. Latta was in it. And I started campaigning up here. And then, if you remember, someone filed a lawsuit. And the federal courts took a look at it and decided that having that little piece of Dillon County in the district didn't make a lot of sense. And they took Latta out. So, I still feel a certain kinship to Latta, because I started campaigning up here and y'all couldn't vote for me. So, thank you so much for inviting me back here tonight. Now, Kent mentioned COVID-19. Some of you may know that part of my responsibilities in Washington today is as Chair of the House Select Subcommittee on the Coronavirus, COVID-19. Our Chair, that Select Subcommittee overseeing about four trillion, not billion, about four trillion dollars to make sure that that money meets what I call the three E test, that the money is being spent efficiently, effectively, and most importantly, equitably. Those are the three Es, that I test every one of those dollars. And so, when I was asked to Chair, Nancy Pelosi told me that she, she knew that I'm what I call a Truman Democrat. Now, a lot of people, especially in the South, call themselves, who are Democrats, call themselves Roosevelt Democrats. I'm not one of them. I'm a Truman Democrat. I've been studying Truman since the age of eight. I was eight years old when he was elected President. And my parents had two rules in my house. Well, they had more than two rules, but two of the rules were, every morning before you picked the fork up for breakfast, you had to recite a Bible verse. And you couldn't say the same one twice. You know, the day my dad put down the rule, he took Jesus' weapon off the table. Which meant that every morning, you had to demonstrate that you had read the Bible. Because that's the only way to get the Bible verse. But then, every evening, before retiring to bed, we had to share with my parents a current event. We didn't have television. And something there that I had back then was an afternoon paper, and it used to be delivered to our house every afternoon. And every night after we did our homework, we would then have to share a current event. Which meant, every day, I had to read that newspaper. And I got enthralled with that campaign of Truman against Dupree. And I just couldn't imagine how a little guy from Missouri, who didn't even go to college, who had a, let's just say, an almonality. He knows those funny glasses he used to wear. And those glasses were because of his sight, or the lack thereof. So much so, until, a lot of people understood for Truman, that memorized the eye chop. When he took the test to go into the military, he couldn't see that chop. But he went to the doctor office early, and he memorized the chop. And that's what Truman, but that's the guy. So, I was just enamored with the guy, who was that creative. And that's what started me into politics, studying Truman. So, Nancy Pelosi comes up to me, and she says, "I know how much you love Truman. And I'm going to set up this committee to take a look at all this money that we're going to be spending to come back from this pandemic. And I want this committee to mimic the Truman Committee that was set up in 1941, to look at the money that was being spent to recover from World War II." And Truman used as an example what had happened after World War I. When millions of dollars were just misspent. Because he had over 100 committees. I think my member serves 119 committees looking at World War I. And he convinced the Senator, if you set up one committee, we could do what is necessary to overlook these funds that have been spent. And she asked me, did I agree with that? And I said, yes. That's a good idea. And the conversation ended. Two days later, she called me back. And I can still remember exactly where I was when I talked to her that day. And she says, I want you to chair the committee. Now, I was taken aback by that because I didn't expect that. But I tried to do everything I possibly and to chair this committee. On July 1st, we had a hearing. And we've had several hearings about how the money's being spent. But we decided, because we heard from the health community that all of a sudden, things were ticking back up again. So we had this hearing on July 1st. And there's some snippets that we have gathered from this hearing. And I want to show them to you now. In charge of this is a young man, Fitzhugh Baffey. He's my intern. He's my intern. See how magnanimous I am? He's from Lata, the head brother of Baffey in the world. Which is not in my district. But he's interning in my office. And I want his mother who is here, sitting right here. I'm over here to see, you better demonstrate to your mother tonight how much you learned. Because you in charge of this video that we about to see. It's a short five-minute video about the Coronavirus and why, I'm going to say this at the end of the talk. Don't let me take away from the video. Fitzhugh, I wanted to show that to you because on the day before yesterday, I woke up to some news. That's very, very troubling. One of the things I heard, you saw someone up here from Missouri. The Delta variant is running rapid in Missouri. A second thing I heard was that 10 little children in the state of Mississippi contracted the Delta variant and of own life support. 10 children. Because this variant has gotten into the country and we got to be concerned about it. Now, the third thing I heard was this. That of all the people who are contracting COVID-19 today, 99.5% of them are unvaccinated. 99.5% of the people who are currently contracting this virus have not been vaccinated. It's an indication that the people who have gotten vaccinated are in fact immune from the virus. In fact, I heard today that the tests indicate that the Delta variant will not penetrate the bodies of anybody who has been fully vaccinated. So, it's incumbent upon us to make ourselves the leaders of one. And to talk to our family members, talk to our church, whatever it is. We need to talk about this. Because if this thing continues to tick up, we could be shut down again. We're going to be shut down again. And nobody should want that to happen again. Because the fact is simple. We have some children in South Carolina that have already lost two years of schooling. And you know what's going to happen to a seventh or eighth grader that loses two years of schooling? We have unquittedly created a social problem. And that's what's going to happen. So we got to get serious about this. South Carolina's at 43%. The nation is at 67%. The experts told us we should try to get over 70%. And that's why the President was out pushing us, trying to get people get to over 70% by July 4th. Because the science indicates that lessens, that creates something called herd immunity. But we didn't get to 70%. But we're still pushing. And the reason we have not gotten to 70%, because the southern states, South Carolina being one of them, seem not to be taking this serious enough. Or having all kinds of crazy ideas about why you shouldn't get it. Now, look, I turned 81 years old next week. So I was around when the polio vaccine came on. During 1944. And polio was in my neighborhood twice. Even one of my classmates dead and another one crippled for life. Now, this whole thing about this vaccine is some attempt on somebody's part to destroy black people. That's foolishness. Foolishness. Nothing could be further from the truth. So this vaccine hesitancy, we got to do something about getting beyond it. No, we're going to put a veto on the same time of the polio vaccine. You had a guy named Charles Drew who unlocked some secrets and figured out how to refrigerate blood and save it if we needed it. We had soldiers, thousands of soldiers dying on the battlefield, not because of the wounds that they received, but they were dying because of the loss of blood. Now, Jonas Salk and Albert Seig came up with the two polio vaccines that virtually eradicated polio from the face of the earth. I took the vaccine like everybody else in my school. I wasn't going to sit there saying, I ain't going to take this vaccine because the people that came up with it are white. Oh, no, give me this vaccine. I don't care what the skin tone was. And I don't know of anybody who refuses to take a blood transfusion because the guy who discovered the method was a black guy in charge of it. You ain't going to not take the blood transfusion. You go to hospital and you got to have a transfusion to save your life? You stick your arm out and start and start the machine? You say, oh, no, I'm not going to do that because the guy who did this was a black guy? No. We got to stop this foolishness. In fact, of the four vaccines we got today, there are four vaccines. The Pfizer, I took the Pfizer. There's two shots. The Moderna, also two shots. The lead scientist for the Moderna vaccine was a black woman in her 30s. She was the lead scientist. And you'd think she would spend her whole life creating something that would destroy her parents? No. So let's stop this foolishness. Tell people, we got to take this thing serious. And we got to do what is necessary to get this vaccine by, I have others, the virus behind us. So please, do what you can to help us get South Carolina in a better place in this district. Now, my main reason for being here tonight, the reason that the Senator asked me to come over and cheer with him by me, Florence. But I'm here tonight because I've had five town halls like this in my district, as I mentioned earlier. And I shared, I wanted people to know what had happened. Now, many of you who know me for a long time, they remember before I came to the Governor's House back in 1971. I ran for the House of Representatives down in Charleston back in 1970. I was declared the winner around 10 o'clock in the evening. And something happened around 3 o'clock in the morning. I got a knock on my door for a newspaper. Not the one newspaper, it was a TV. I'll never forget his name, Tom Nettie. Who was a TV reporter down in Charleston. Came to my house, 3:30 in the morning, rang the doorbell. Said, man, you better get down to the courthouse because something has happened. Well, I got down to the courthouse and something had happened. Rather than being a 500-vote winner, they told me I was a 500-vote loser because somebody forgot to carry their watch. You know, handing up your votes. Well, I don't know how true that was. But I know I never got to the House of Representatives. But at that rate, John West was elected Governor that same day. And said, and I'll never forget it, he said, we will not leave our wounded on the battlefield. And invited me to his office. And I became a part of the governor's staff. And have not looked back since. But one of the things I learned about that came from a Senator that some of you may remember. He was a Senator from Orangeburg. Stayed in the Senate for 50 years. He became a good friend. One day, he knocked on my door, invited himself in and asked if he ever see. Marshall Williams. Sat down, and Marshall Williams said this to me. He said, Nick Farber, everybody knows that what happened to you down there in Charleston was not right. But I want you to run again. And I don't want you to give up. This is a southern white Senator saying to this southern black guy, don't you give up. I want you to run again. He said, but the next time you run, I want you to do this for me. I want you to tell the people what you're going to do for them. And when you get elected, by God, you do it. And then you go back to them and tell them that you done it. I've never forgotten that. So I'm here tonight because last year, when I pleaded with people to join me in support of Joe Biden. Thank you. I said, here's what Joe Biden will do for us if we get him elected. By God, we got him elected. Now, he'll tell you tonight exactly what he did for us. Now, Fitzhugh is helpful. Can't do this without Fitzhugh. And we're going to go through this little PowerPoint so you can see exactly what has happened with the first big bill that we passed, which is the American Rescue Act. Now, this ain't the last bill. It's the first one. I'll talk to you about the two other bills that are going to pass real soon. Now, the American Rescue Act. Today is July 15th. Some of you sitting here tonight got some money in your account today. You don't have to raise your hand, you don't have to. That's all right. I do know this. The Senator told me, he heard from somebody in relative, on his way here, his check sorted out today. So here's what happens. And here's why. I want to tell the background of this because people get all upset sometimes. People say, that's a giveaway. I just told you. I have overseen the expenditures around four trillion dollars. There are some businesses that got as much as $50 million. They got it because they lost business in the Coronavirus. They had to close their doors. That they laid people off. Some of you are among the people who got laid off. So all we're saying here is, if we can give out $50 million to a corporation because they lost money, we're trying to do something for the families that lost money. So don't let anybody shame you into saying you got a giveaway. This ain't no giveaway. We're trying to rescue your families. And so what we're saying here, starting today, advance payments to any family that's got children under six. For that child, you will start today getting $3,600 for that child in $300 per month allocations. If you got a child over six, but not yet 18, you get $3,000. So if there's a family, in fact, someone was at the event last night who told one of my staffers that his daughter is a waitress with three young children. He came, he said, he came to my town hall to give me hell about something. But then, he saw the presentation and he fell in love with me. My daughter. He said, you tell me tomorrow, my daughter could start getting some money for them kids that may have my wife trying to help her raise. That's what it's like. That's what it's like. I know a little bit about that because Jennifer got a sister. They got two children. And I'm trying to help and she's trying to help. She fall in this category too. I feel relieved. So that's what, this is real. To help these families. So don't let anybody shame you into this. Now, I got to turn around. You know, I have to explain these glasses I got on. I've been having trouble. I got two new eyes. But I can't find no glasses to work. Because what happened, I got the first eye done just before the pandemic struck. And then they told me that was not really necessary for me to get the other one just yet. So I had to get glasses for the first eye. Then they called me about 12 months later and says, look, it's time for you to do the other eye. So I went back to do the other eye. I had to get glasses for that eye. And then they decided to put the glasses for the three. And I can't see nothing, I look up. So I'm telling my brothers. My brother said to me, he said, look, he says, I know you might see better without your glasses, but you look better with them. So I got on my glasses here tonight so I can look better. So I mean, I see as well. So y'all excuse me if I call up one of them. That's a fact, I got glasses. I took it off, I can see everything up there well. Now, what that is, look at this, because this ain't just about just picking people up off the street. You, a joint father, if you found a joint with children that fall in this category, your income could be up to $150,000 a year and you still get it. That's right. This is to help you. Not just people who are poor. Now, if you are single, father with children, income's up to $112,500. Now, now, some of y'all may fall outside of that. But most of the people I know fall in that category. Okay. Fitzhugh, next one. Now, here's what you got to do. This is important. In order to get this money, you should do number one. Your children should have a Social Security number. Now, I don't know about any of you, but when Jennifer was born, within a week, she had a Social Security number. I bet that's what I bet that's for all three of my daughters. As the mother were born, I make the word, give them a social security number. So if you have a grandchild or a child and your children's got children, ask them to please get them a social security number right away. Now, you can't do it without a social security number, but it's just getting complicated. The second thing you need to do, the children must live with you for about at least half of the year. Now, if you got a child that you're giving away, or got somebody down the street that you killed, no, you got to live with you for at least half of the year. The third thing, must be under the age of eighteen as of December thirty-first. So that's through seventeen, not to seventeen, but through seventeen, they'll be eligible. So if you got a child that turns eighteen on January one, it means that you get this check through December. That's a January one, the child turns eighteen, you ain't getting the check no more. Okay? And the fourth thing up there is be claimed on your tax return. Now, if somebody else claiming your child on your tax return, or their tax return, you ain't eligible. And it's going to be fraudulent for you to file if you have a child, and that happens sometime, if somebody else is claiming on the tax return. That, and putting this up here because we want you to share with your family members and your friends, let's do this right. You don't want to end up intro, over three hundred dollars or nothing. Now, if you filed taxes in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty or received a stimulus check, you will receive an advanced payment of a town tax credit by mail or direct deposit. If you're eligible for the direct deposit, and I'm told that eighty-two percent of the people will get direct deposit. If you did not file a stimulus check, and I want to mention this, you must check your eligibility with the IRS. Now, at all the other five town hall meetings, because they were in my district, I had the IRS person for all of them. We had two people from the IRS, so if anybody had a question, they were there answering. They could not come with me tonight because, as I said, Hatter is outside the district. So that's why they're not here tonight. Well, let me say this, I found out at the beginning of this, that a lot of people did not receive the stimulus check. I understand there are literally thousands of people who still did not claim the stimulus check. Now, some of the stimulus checks went to the dress that was on file and got returned, but they're still sitting there waiting for you. So if you deserve enough stimulus check, which is that fourteen hundred dollars, and you have not gotten it, you need to visit the IRS because it could very well be sitting up in their office waiting for you. Now, next slide. This is for the sixth congressional district, but I'm a fool in the black square. In the sixth congressional district, ninety-two point one percent of the children in that, in the sixth district will receive, ninety-two point one, but guess what? Ninety-four point four percent of the children in the seventh congressional district will get that. There are more children in the seventh congressional district getting this than in the sixth. If you go over there, you will see that there are four thousand children under six that will be getting the check. In the seventh district, that number is five thousand. Five thousand children under six will get that. And I got the number here for the other two, I committed some list to memory, but I guess I'm going to be eating one next to another. There are one hundred and forty-two thousand children that make up that ninety-four percent. But the five thousand under six, we got that, thirteen thousand one hundred. Thirteen thousand one hundred. So the number eleven thousand three hundred for the seventh district is thirteen four hundred. The number four thousand for the seventh district is five thousand. The ninety-two point one percent for the sixth district is ninety-four point four percent for the seventh congressional district. Next one. Now, I want to talk a little bit about this because this is a very important thing here that you need to know. This is in the Rescue Act as well. We have lowered the cost of healthcare payments. Lowest healthcare costs for nine million Americans who buy health insurance through Now, what this will do, it saves an average of fifty dollars per person per month. It also benefits two hundred and thirty thousand South Carolinians. And it reduces deductibles for new coverage by ninety percent. So if your deductible is a hundred dollars, that's for new coverage, this bill reduces that to ten dollars. Now, here's why you need to click on the healthcare.gov. And if you're as challenged as I am, then go get with your grandchildren and get them to click on for you. Because when you click on, it could very well be that you may fall into one of these three categories. Number one, you may be eligible for a premium free plan. This means there are new plans that you may not have to pay a premium for. You need to click on healthcare.gov to find that out. Or you may have a lower cap on your monthly premium. Or you may be getting a subsidy if you're unemployed. If you join unemployment, you may get a subsidy. The only way to find this out is to either go down to the IRS office or with your computer, put on the healthcare.gov and you see whether or not you qualify for one of these. Remember, this is an effort to help you recover from something you had nothing to do with. I don't care how rich you are, I don't care how much religion you may have. COVID-19 was known irrespective of wealth, religion, race, gender. COVID-19 visited everybody. And this is to help everybody recover from COVID-19. So now, who will benefit? Families of four, the big country, twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars and thirty-nine thousand seven fifty dollars will pay no monthly premium for health insurance and have significantly reduced deductibles. We didn't give you a handout, so now, I'm going through this, but take this home with you and to be sure, then you sit down and pull out your check stubs or your whatever you get from your, and figure out how much your monthly pay is and see whether or not you fall in this category. Families of four with income above a hundred and sixty thousand dollars are eligible to receive health insurance through the marketplace with premiums that don't exceed eight point five percent of their income. So if you're making a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year, check it. Because your premiums, nobody can charge you more than eight point five percent for your premium. The health insurance company cannot charge you more than eight point five percent if you make a hundred and ten thousand dollars. See, a lot of people, when we passed the Affordable Care Act, you remember, a lot of people didn't like the Affordable Care Act. And so they went to court. And all of it is Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court decided five to four, the Justice Roberts, right here, the majority opinion, saying that the Affordable Care Act is constitutional. Some of them still didn't like it. So they found another reason to go back to court, they went back to the United States Supreme Court. This time, Supreme Court decided six to three, that is constitutional. Some of them still didn't like that. They came here to South Carolina, and the Attorney General here in South Carolina, he joined with them, following the God in Texas. If y'all been reading about him, this way, don't worry about, as they said out in the Gullah Gitcha country, he gonna get his jest desserts. So they go back to the Supreme Court. This time, Supreme Court decided seven to two, that is constitutional. I suspect they're going to settle down now, and we won't have to worry about that anymore. What we got to worry about now is improving the Affordable Care Act. And that's what we're attempting to do with this bill, to improve the Affordable Care Act so people can get healthcare coverage. Now, here's all the things you do. Healthcare.gov, now, they got that other thing over there, I'm telling everybody, just go on healthcare.gov and I think you can get everything that you need right from there. The last slide really is just, my memory serves, that's my office stuff, you have to go to Tom Rice for to get information, because my stuff is confined to the sixth district. Is that the last one? Let's talk about Medicaid for a minute. The reason I want to talk about Medicaid is because I'm one of those people, just like your senator and your house member from the next county. I believe that South Carolina made a big mistake by not expanding Medicaid. There are only twelve states in the United States, only twelve states in the United States of America that has not expanded Medicaid. Only twelve. And what's interesting about that is that Kentucky is up there, the big blue, right above Tennessee and North Carolina, that's Kentucky, KY. You come right down and look next to Tennessee is Arkansas, it's blue. Kentucky currently has a Democratic governor, they have a Republican governor when they expand it. Arkansas, a Republican governor, and they expanded. And you know what they did? They expanded Medicaid, they put the Affordable Care Act in place, and they changed the name. In Kentucky, it's called Connect with a K, Connect. And then they say, people tell you, "I don't want nothing to do with Obamacare, but I love Connect." Same thing. That's what they did. And I was joking with Black Master, I said, "Man, why don't you just go ahead and expand Medicaid and call it the Black Master Plan?" He didn't think that was too far. Well, at any rate, here's the deal. That has created what we call a gap occurs for adults in states that do not expand Medicaid under the ACA. That gap is there. I have been working for the last several years trying to find a way to deal with that gap without participation of the state. I had a long conversation last week, it might have been the week before, with Senator Warner. Senator Warner is from Virginia. Virginia expanded. He's on the budget committee. He's been my go-to guy on a lot of things like broadband. And so I asked him to have a conversation with me, and I thought maybe I could really get him to soften on a little bit. And he said to me, he said, "Look, you know, I got a governor, you got a governor. My governor has expanded Medicaid, we are paying our fair share of that expansion. Your governor has not expanded, so why should I support your governor getting Medicaid? Your benefit of Medicaid is meant, is matching and not doing, and not paying your fair share." And I said to him, I said, "It ain't about your governor or my governor. It's about the people who need healthcare. And what I'm going to do is try to get healthier to people irrespective of what government is sitting in the office." Now, I wish I could tell you that I got somewhere with him, I didn't. But I'm going to keep fighting, and I'm beginning to be on the winning side on this. In fact, yesterday, as I was on my way to the town hall yesterday, I got a report and all of y'all saw that an agreement was made on yesterday, it was publicized on yesterday, that there's an agreement for a three point five trillion dollar infrastructure package that will go into reconciliation. Well, I was, it reported to me that there is money there to close that gap. It may not close it the other way. Because here's the thing, South Carolina would receive six hundred million dollars if they were expanding Medicaid. And you'll have fewer uninsured residents, and we would reduce the racial health disparities. Now, here's what we got to remember about Medicaid that nobody talks about. Fifty percent of Medicaid dollars was spent on nursing home care. Fifty percent of Medicaid dollars go for nursing home care, and that's nursing home care for everybody, not just people who are getting insurance on Medicaid, that's for everybody. That's for a lot of teachers, sheriffs, dead to sheriffs, a lot of ordinary people, middle income people, who've got a mother or a grandmother in a nursing home. I can tell you, if you're a school teacher, you'd be a chief pastor. You ain't making the kind of salary that will allow you to pay the full cost of nursing home care. No way. I've been down that road and I know. My mother-in-law, when it gets to a nursing home, I thought, big time state employee. I tell my wife, "Don't worry about a thing, there's a nursing home right next to my office, let's put it in the nursing home." I go there and visit her every day, "Don't worry about a thing." She look at me, says, "Have you checked the cost?" I said, "No, but it can't be good." Both of us making a salary, but it can't afford that. So I go next day, and the next day I went and I checked the cost. I came back home, I said, "We might be able to make it for the first month." But after that, it's all over. So nursing home care is in Medicaid, so you can be middle income, ineligible for Medicaid, but you will still benefit from the expansion of Medicaid because of nursing home care for your parents or grandparents. So this whole notion about us not expanding Medicaid is a path like us not taking the vaccination. It's the same kind of reasoning. It's the same kind of reasoning. And so, it's important for us, uh, to take a hard look at this. Now, there are three things I'm working on right now that I think are very important. These are the three things, and this concludes my presentation. The child tax credit, today, and I just talked about, it's only one year. It expires next year. I'm working with a group to see what we can do about extending that beyond a year. Especially if this expires. It's still in our future. So we're working on that. The three point five trillion dollar deal, uh, that they had talked about, there is monies in that that may allow us to do that. The second thing, I'm working on expanding tax credits for healthcare.gov because they expire in 2022. And then the last thing I'm working on, that I just talked about, was, is how we get that gap with existing twelve states, South Carolina being one. How do we get that gap eliminated? So those are the three things I'm working on here, and there are other things as well, but these are the three that I'm here to talk about tonight. Now, I suspect you have some questions about what you've seen. And you may ask your question about what you have not seen or heard. And, um, I'll respond to all your questions, and Terry and Kent will answer them. So then, there are mics that are over here if someone has a question. There's a mic over here, a mic here. So either one of these mics will work. Um, or we can, this one might work too. Anybody got a question? About anything you've heard tonight? Anything you've been thinking about and have not heard?
I've got a comment.
Yes, sir.
A positive comment. I want to thank you for the, uh, American Rescue Plan funding. For this school district, we received about eleven million dollars for the free act. Eight point five million dollars of that money is gonna build a new building and stuff. We need about, about this dollar. So we're gonna save the eight million dollars we got hands off, make a block, build a great junk forward debt bus and be able to take care of the building needs and we've been giving off the decade.
Very good. I'm sure you've got your plan, thanks for the other, uh, for the rest of that, the twenty-five million in place.
Yes, sir.
Keep them in place. Because, quite frankly, um, that's, if you look at the next two bills, I mentioned there are two bills going forward that I have not talked about. One is the so-called bipartisan deal that was struck between the Democrats and the Republicans for one point two trillion dollars. Uh, that deal is moving forward. There is school construction money in that deal. Then, the three point five that I just talked about, uh, that's gonna come, and I'm told that they're gonna have reconciliation language. No, they're gonna have the vote next week on that reconciliation language, maybe sometimes, uh, before we go home for, uh, come home for August. Uh, and there is, mother, there are two. Because what we've done is something I've been working on for about fifteen years. Number one, broadband. Broadband. Now, on January sixth, at the, during the election, I, um, I was among those to a undisclosed location, and, uh, the very first phone call I got, you'll be remembered, uh, that in his presentation, Senator Williams mentioned that they just approved thirty million dollars for broadband. If you go back and look at the day, you will see that it was a few days after that that Mac Master made his State of the State address. And you will remember in that address, the very first call I got that day was from Mac Master. And he said this to me, he said, call them and see if you're okay. Now, this is kind of funny because, you know, uh, Mac Master, I don't agree with anything to it. Uh, but we feel good about it. Uh, and he said, I'm calling to see if you're all right. I said, yeah, I'm fine. He, there's one thing I want you to know. He said, I'm gonna give my state its, state, and I'm asking thirty million dollars. And here's what he said, for your broadband. I said, I appreciate that, but I, I can't, I need a little more. Because in the broadband, in, in the deal, the so-called bipartisan deal, there's sixty-five billion dollars for broadband. The bill that I proposed and, um, has been approved by the House is called the Accessible Affordable Broadband for All. That bill calls for an expenditure of ninety-five billion dollars, which is what it will cost to put broadband in every home in this country. So if we, we will get sixty-five billion, that, that's gonna pay us in the bipartisan bill. Then the partisan deal that's gonna come on the reconciliation, I'm hopeful that we'll get the rest of that thirty billion there so we can start out, uh, building broadband, everything. And I knew you needed it here. I knew you needed it here because I, I was on, uh, the phone, uh, with my brother, uh, when we started down this road up here. And, and, and all of a sudden, uh, I ain't here. And then I heard it. And I did hear it. So finally I sit there, I said, man, I'm in love. I told you, when I get back out on ninety-five later tonight, this, see, this happened tonight, and I can tell you where the roads are. You go down five twenty-one, uh, well, three twenty-one was a special down line, Denmark, uh, Allen there. Uh, you might as well put your phone in your pocket. Uh, so, we gonna get rid of that in this state. We gonna get broadband in the state. And I'm gonna tell you what incited me to do it. I, I, I told the story, and a true story. You all remember when we were having the, the issue, uh, concerning the Confederate flag flying on the State House? Well, in the middle of that boycott, Serena Williams, uh, was under contract to play a tennis tournament down in Charleston, uh, the Family Circle Club. She did not want to bide away, uh, the boycott, so her accountant, Larry is a guy that I've known for a long time. Uh, we spent several Christmases together down, uh, down in Hilton Head, where I spent every Christmas. Um, Larry called me. He said, man, I can get your help. I said, what's up? He said, well, you know, uh, Serena has got to play in this tournament or lose her contract with the company that's managed her fifth career for all of her life. And she will violate the contract, and they have put her on notice that she's got to play in this tournament. And I want you, you know, if you can help mitigate this issue. I said, yeah, I can. But it's gonna cost you. He said, what will it cost? I said, it's gonna cost you a hundred laptops. I want to put laptops for kids in Scotch Branch High School. I want a hundred laptops that I can put in the library so students can check their laptops out, just like they check books. And he said, well, good, I think we can work that out. I said, well, man, there's one other thing. I want a hundred tickets to the tennis tournament. So these kids at Scotch Branch trying to school, they ain't never been to no professional tennis tournament. So I want a hundred tickets, and then I'll pay for their transportation to get up down there. Uh, he said, okay. So I got the tickets. Got a hundred tickets, nine students and ten parents. And got the laptops. I thought I had done something great. I went to find Rose Wilder, who was the superintendent at the time. In fact, I saw Rose a couple nights ago, I was in Manette. She's now retired, doing some other work around here, but I saw her, we laughed about it. I went to tell Rose what I had done, and she looked at me like I was crazy. And I'm saying, what's wrong with this lady? I just got a hundred laptops for her students, and give them a field trip to a tennis tournament so they can see Serena Williams play? And she's looking at me like I'm crazy? She said, what do you want me to do with these laptops? I said, I want you to put them in the library. And let the kids treat them like books, they can check them out and take them home, just like they take books home. She said, then what they gonna do with their laptops when they get them home? And that's when it struck me. They ain't connected to the internet. She says, oh, who, laptops ain't gonna do nothing, man, they good. And that's what started me on this track. And that's when I realized, because Jennifer's daughter, Sydney, my granddaughter, just several weeks before that, it might have been days, I was sitting down talking with Sydney, and I said, Sydney, you know, meeting the grandfather, I says, um, uh, have you done your homework for the day? It's about four o'clock in the afternoon. She said, no, I have not received it yet. I said, what do you mean? It's four o'clock in the afternoon, you're out of school, and you haven't received your homework? She said, no, I haven't received it. You get it, uh, on the internet. It comes in around four thirty every day. And I'm saying, my daughter, my granddaughter, is getting her homework every day from Richland Northeast High School via the internet. And I'm representing kids in Claret County whose homes ain't wired. I said, something ain't right about that. And that's what started me to fighting this battle. This network. Thank you. I said, that's what started me to fighting this battle. So I've been on it ever since, it, it's like a one trick pony. I would walk in the office sometime, they'd look at me, here comes the internet. But I would not turn it loose. Would not turn it loose. And I felt it a great victory when the bipartisan group decided to put sixty-five billion dollars into the internet for this country. So these are things that Senator was talking about earlier. In rural South Carolina, there are things that people living in urban South Carolina take for granted. And then they look at you like you're crazy when you're trying to get it done, uh, for rural communities. I feel strongly about the communities along the high ninety-five corridor. I feel strongly about rural communities in the state. I feel about them like the, uh, gentleman farmer in Tennessee back in the nineteen forties, when the, uh, co-ops were getting ready to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of rural electrification. And this farmer stood up in church one night, and he said, brothers and sisters, I want to tell you something. The greatest thing on earth is to have the love of God in your heart. And the next greatest thing is to have electricity in your house. Now, that might have been the greatest thing for the twentieth century, and it was for rural America. But I'm convinced that the greatest thing that we can do for rural America in the twenty-first century is to put broadband in every home. Without broadband, we cannot have telehealth or telemedicine. Without broadband, we cannot have online learning for our children. Without broadband, businesses and rural communities cannot do in-time deliveries. And that's what it takes for a lot of businesses in rural communities to function. Otherwise, they got to stock up. And there are things out there waiting until they can sell it. With broadband, and they get connected, they can get their orders via the internet, fulfill those orders, and function and make a profit like bridges can in, in more urban areas too. This is what we've got to do. Rural South Carolina is deserving of as much attention, as much resources, and in the other part of South Carolina. And that's what I'm dedicated to. And I don't ask, why don't you live in my district? I don't ask. Now, I know the way they got it set up. If you send me an email, it automatically goes to your conscience, and it gonna come to me. The system is set up that way. I didn't set it up that way. But you can't get in touch with your son. I wish he didn't, but he's got my phone number. Terry, I see him too often. And this young lady, um, if, if all goes well, I'm gonna federalize her, uh, in the very near future. Her former teachers in here, who, who's her teacher that I saw tonight?
The mayor.
The mayor?
And the brand bro.
Nancy.
Yeah, yeah, the better mayor, I understand. His former student of yours. You done good. Done good. Uh, because when I was looking around to make a recommendation for whoever liked to see the federal marshal of the state of South Carolina, her name kept popping up. And I had nominated her. I've done the nominations, out of my hands now. If you have any questions, let me thank all of you for coming out tonight. I hope that you find this information, uh, to your benefit. You've got, uh, a carryout, uh, the tick home, uh, discussing with people. If there are any questions about any of this, uh, the IRS Office should be consulted. Call your Senator, uh, and I'll gladly do what we can, uh, to help you navigate whatever the problem might be. Uh, thank you so much for allowing us to be here with you this evening. Thank you, Terry, for your friendship. And you, Senator, thank you so much for allowing me to be here.
Let me, um, just, um, say, uh, before we dismiss. Uh, first, I want to recognize Mr. Larry Leggett and his team for putting all this together, the sound system and all the technical, uh, capabilities that we, uh, utilize this evening. Thank you so much, Larry. And of course, to the Superintendent of this great school, Dr. John Curry. Thank you, Dr. Curry, for opening your doors and... Let me just say, thank you, Congressman, for being with us this evening. Thank you for accepting the invitation. Uh, it's kind of like they say back home, you have gotten it from the horse's mouth. It's not secondhand, this is firsthand. And we appreciate that. And like you said, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us, and then we will reach out to the Congressman.
That's right.
As that works. But, um, again, thank you all for being here, we had a good crowd, thank you for coming out. And I know I've been educated, uh, here this evening, and I feel like you have too. Uh, so, thank you, and safe travels. Thank you.